Call the Chester Town Utilities Commission for December 16, 2013 to order. Are there any deletions or corrections of the minutes of the meeting of November 18, 2013?
Okay, I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Cash on hand is $1,080,156.73. And can we go to payment of the bills, please, with the Utilities Commission?
Okay, I move that we pay the retail bills as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good evening, Bob. Can we have your report?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This should be relatively short. There was a leak out on Devon Drive in front of 101 Devon Drive. It was the day that it snowed, so we did not work on it that day. We found out about it on Friday. So we let it go the weekend. We did a repair on Monday, and by Wednesday, it was leaking again. We wound up having to replace the entire pipe. But that's all straight, and there's no more leaks on Devon. There are a couple suspicious spots in Coventry Farms, but I didn't see any running water. I'm hoping it's just water coming up from the weather that was under the road, because it's all on a downhill side. And a lot of times, the water can run down under the stone that's on the road and come up in spots. Water Street has been repaired, and we got the bill for it.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. It was more than I expected, but it is done, and the street is now drivable without worrying about damage to anybody's vehicles. We got the jetter back, the jetter pumped back today at about 3 o'clock. We'll be putting that back on tomorrow, so we won't see any more bills coming in for a jetter rental. We also got the bills from the consultants. They cost us a pretty good penny when you combine the consultant with the attorney we had to get. We're looking at right around $10,000. Over Radcliffe, the generator and transfer switch over there is one of the two that weren't replaced about 15 years ago when the generators were upgraded. The one at Radcliffe, we had a problem with the switch on it, and the generator guy came to look at it for me, and he called me up, and said, "Come take a look at this." The inside of the generator control panel, the wires are brittle, and the switches are corroded. So I think in the next budget year, you'll be seeing something on that. That generator's going to end up having to be replaced. On the transfer switch for that same generator, the control boards for it, we just got one repaired. I don't know how long we're going to be able to get those repaired, but the transfer switch is going to need to be upgraded, too. And that's all I have for you.
Okay. Any questions for Bob?
Well, I don't see. We have one resident that has four units that I talked to you about. I don't see a refund on here, so I guess I'll have to talk to Pat.
I don't know if they show on there. Did she request the refund?
Bill said she would get a refund.
Yeah, and I agree.
When we had the meeting.
I agree, but typically, somebody has to write a letter requesting it.
Okay.
And then we can do it. And I had that conversation a year or two ago. We need it to be requested, and then we can do it. And there's nothing stopping that, except for the request. And I'm not even sure that it hasn't been done. I haven't checked the account.
We had a meeting together, maybe about three weeks ago, and Bill had said that she would get a refund for one unit. And I don't remember whether he said how much it was or not, but I'll keep an eye on that.
Check the check in Bill.
I'm nothing about that meeting.
Okay.
We'll discuss that.
Any other questions for Bob? Anybody out there? Yes, Sam.
The leak in Devon, will that eventually be paved back over?
Yes, sir. What happens typically when we do a repair in the street? We fill the hole with sand or good fill material, and then we put about 12 to 18 inches of CR6, or crusher run, which is stone with dust, because it compacts and fills all the voids. And then we let the traffic run over that for a few weeks to make sure it's compacted good. If we repair the street too fast, what you end up with is an inverted speed bump, because everything underneath it there is still settling. So we give it some time and some weather. A little bit of rain helps a lot, helps compact everything. And then we get them paved generally twice a year, so they won't do paving in the winter. But if it gets to be problematic, we can put some cold patch on it until the blacktop plant's fired up, and we can do the repair.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Call the mayor. Thank you, Bob, honey.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, sweetheart.
Merry Christmas.
Call the mayor and council meeting for December 16, 2013 to order. Are there any deletions or corrections of the minutes of the meeting of December 2nd?
Okay, I request that we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Cash on hand in the banks is $2,211,429.12. And can we go to the payment of the bills, please?
Okay, I move that we pay the bills as presented.
Two seconds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may interrupt one second. You have a special visitor approaching.
Okay.
Oh, Merry Christmas, everybody! Merry Christmas, how are you doing? How are you doing? What are you turning your head for? Merry Christmas, how are you doing? Merry Christmas, how are you?
I've been real good, Sam.
I tell, sit up in the back there. Merry Christmas, how are you doing?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Hi, Santa.
How are you?
Santa, how are you?
Merry Christmas. You been good this year?
No.
Don't ask him.
You've done this in seven days. Merry Christmas, how are you doing?
Don't go asking me.
Oh, you been good, I could tell. Oh, how are you doing? Come here, we're looking at pictures of you. How are you doing? We're going to turn around. Come here, young lady. How are you doing this year?
Right now, I'm doing great.
I've got a couple questions to ask you.
Better use that before I sign in the mail.
Hey, don't write that, keep that out of the chat. Let me ask you questions. Your bedroom clean this year?
I beg your pardon?
Your bedroom.
I don't have one.
You sleeping on the couch?
No, I'm a, what do you call it? A bag lady.
Oh, you're a bag lady? I'm sure I can find a grocery cart for you. So you've been really good.
Oh, yeah, best.
What do you want this year for Christmas?
Four more years.
Trust me there. I'm surprised you there. You been down, you been down by 9:00?
8:30.
8:30? It's my jew, boy, you better start a sex. Merry, Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you, I hear you.
And I love you dearly.
I love you, too. I love all the work you do.
It's a love fest.
Just don't fall down our chimney.
Oh, no, hey, I'm coming in your back door to give you the key before I get out of here.
Madam Mayor and Council and the audience, I want you to know that after 22 years of continuous service from Mr. and Mrs. Kim and Mike Morgan, that there will be a new Santa's helper in the community next year, and we wanted to thank them very much for their continued operation and support of the entire Kent County community during this season.
Thank you. Yes, Sam. That's Mrs. Claus, that's the one that gets me in all these little gigs that I have to do and keeps me rolling, and I turn into Scrooge, and she tries to get me out of the mood.
I have a proclamation for you all, because I don't have my glasses on. A proclamation for Santa and Mrs. Claus. Oh, not bad. I'll make sure I give back to you.
I got compliments.
Whereas for so many years, you have given such time and energy to the children of Chester Town and Kent County during the Christmas season. And whereas you are undoubtedly busy throughout the season at the North Pole, and still make time to come to our small town. Whereas countless hours have been spent listening to the wishes of boys and girls, both naughty and nice. Whereas you enliven the town of Chester Town with your arrival each year and have brought tidings of great joy to so many. Now be it therefore resolved, the Mayor and Council of Chester Town recognize Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus for their dedication to the community throughout their years of service to the Chester Town area and proclaim Wednesday, December 25, 2013, as Santa and Mrs. Claus Day in Chester Town.
Well, I worked very, very hard 22 years ago. I had a friend there, and he said, "What can we do?" And I started off, took a boat trailer, got supply aboard, made a sleeve, and the rest of it, he probably knew Mr. John Laramore. Well, my first year, my first start, he said he couldn't do nothing, but he ride just led to Santa Claus. I said, "No problem, he'd know it was coming." I pulled up a brand-new 1990 Mustang, convertible, light, generator on the back, sled on it, about 250 lights. And me and Mr. Claus right there, we drove him down the highway in Kent County, and they stopped every sentence, and I'm like, you know, you get one person, just touch you right here every year, you've done your part. And these kids out here, they're fabulous. They're, you know, just, you come around that far, a truck is like, where did he come from?
Yeah.
But they follow you.
Grownups, too.
So next year, like I said, I'm stepping down, but I hope you guys choose a good one, because it's going to take, it's going to take a lot to take care of that street out there, because I can't get in the house anymore. Saturday, Saturday, the new boy scout leader and his wife got the pass crossed a little bit. I was standing there, I looked at Mr. Claus, and that's 3:45 minutes. I said, "Hey, who the boy scout's out there?" "I don't know." I'm not working, I've been working in that house every year. A new one, one doorknob, it's locked. I said, "If I pull on it hard enough, I can get it open." All of a sudden, I grabbed it. I said, "Look, we got to get started." I snatched it. Little boy turned around, "Mommy, mommy, Santa Claus drove into his house." Just that little giggles you get. It ain't so much. And I do love Chester Town. It's part of my life for 22 years. So I really appreciate everything you guys have done for me, and I really like that. Thank you very much, everybody.
You're welcome.
See you soon. Hey, you keep the cocoa warm.
He does.
Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas. Go away.
You're going to be good.
Come in, be fun.
Yeah, I thought so.
Chief Baker.
You follow that.
Don't forget me.
I'm on. You'll get right after.
Would you like to do the swearing in first?
Yes, you have the.
I do, yes, ma'am.
He has the thing. All right. I'll come down, so if I can sign it.
Would you like to read this, or you want?
No, go ahead. My God, I'm.
Okay. Would you like to put another?
He has it.
Raise right here.
Here, I can hold.
Why don't we do that?
Okay.
Cool. Okay, we're good. I want you to state your name when I pause after I. Aye?
I'll listen.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the United States of America?
And allegiance to the United States of America.
And to the State of Maryland?
To the State of Maryland.
That I will serve honestly and faithfully?
I will serve honestly and faithfully.
To uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States?
To uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Maryland?
And the Constitution of the State of Maryland.
That I will enforce the laws of Chester Town?
That I will enforce the laws of Chester Town.
And the State of Maryland?
And the State of Maryland.
And that I will obey the orders of the chief?
And that I will obey the orders of the chief.
And of my superior officers?
And of my superior officers.
According to the rules and regulations?
According to the rules and regulations.
Of the Chester Town Police Department?
Of the Chester Town Police Department.
The town of Chester Town?
The town of Chester Town.
And the State of Maryland?
And the State of Maryland.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Hold on a second. Gentlemen, this is a little different, but it's.
It's the same thing. They'll just put in their personnel file after they sign.
We want you, we'll sign this. Mr. Duncan first. Together. And then I'll bet on my son.
Hey, look, I can hear you.
We're going to get our next one. Awards last week. We have to have this in by when?
Monday, next Monday.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to present the information for the month of November, the police report. In administration, we had 95 hours, which was 7% of our time dedication. We had 65 hours for criminal investigations, which was 5%. 67 hours for accident investigations, which was 1%. Our vehicle patrol was 44% of our hours, at 592. Our foot patrol was 104 hours, which yielded 8%. Our training was 279 hours, yielding 7%. Our court time was 41 hours, which was 21%. And our overtime was 119, which was 9% of that budget. We made 16 adult arrests involving 46 separate charges by priority or highest for the traffic, with highest of 12, 10 CES, 7 DWI-related, 4 with a bad checks, 3 FOA, 3 failed to obey, 2 disorderly, 2 FDA, 2 theft, and 1 DOP. And we don't see that in offense, violation of protective order. We had 2 juvenile arrests, one was an assault, one was a theft. We had 3 civil citations issued. And on Part 1 offenses were 16, 2 were cleared by arrest, one was cleared by exception. We had 27 Part 2 offenses, 13 were cleared by arrest, 4 by exception. Murder vehicle citations issued for the month of November were 59. Warnings were 67. We had 203 red speed citations issued, that's down about 60 from last month. We had 7 criminal citations issued. There's the overtime breakdown. Maybe those are pie charts. We had 17% for shift coverage, we had 20% for public relations, we had 14% reimbursed from grant overtime, 25% was extended investigations, and 14% was spent on training. Calls for service broken down by Ward. We had 2% in Ward 1, 40% in Ward 2. Ward 3 had 20%, Ward 4 had 22% outside the jurisdiction, and at large, combined for 11, well, for 13%. Our busiest calls for service was Saturday. And our busiest time of service, which reflects, I think, that the people out during the holidays, it's actually 9 o'clock to 10 o'clock in the morning, typically it's between the evening hours, usually around 9 or 10. So our human activity has changed up a little bit with the season. And that concludes the presentation for the month of November.
Thank you, Chief.
I'm glad to see that Ward 3 has gotten so much better, and Ward 2 took over all the baddies.
That is not criminal activity. Everybody. That's not criminal activity.
Yeah, we passed it.
It's home alarms going.
I know we, they made an arrest on one male and found out that he wasn't actually the culprit.
Yes, sir.
Are we any closer to picking up the real person?
We are, yes, sir. I will point out that that subject was not charged here in Kent County. Our investigator, he used good judgment and instinct, always a good, and held off on that charge, rightfully so. We do have 2 suspects, and will be bringing charges in the very near future, bringing that mess to a close.
I just, I like that to get out to the public, because I'm sure they'll feel a little better about.
Yes, sir.
When they go get their coffee in the morning, they're not going to be looking at a guy with a gun.
I appreciate that, and they can rest assured, we're going to take care of it very carefully.
Any other questions for Chief?
Thank you.
Anybody out there? Chief, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, next up, we're going to, I mean, in addition, Marty Stetson has something he'd like to say and do.
All right, I asked for this time for the, for the privilege of paying tribute to the lady who's sat next to me for the last 6 years. And before that, she sat next to somebody from this ward for 26 years, for a total of 32 years, which I'm not sure is a record in the State of Maryland, but I'm pretty sure it's a record here in a town of Chester Town. And I just wanted to let her know that myself and the town of Chester Town really appreciate what she has done. I, people have said the relationship between Mabel and I are tightsy at times, like an old married couple. And I thought to myself, well, you know, that's not too bad, because you don't become an old married couple without some affection and respect for the person that's next to you. So maybe we do get along like an old married couple. And, but I'll tell you this, Sam, you might be able to beat a record, but I'm not, because when I get 90, I'm not going to run anymore, and I'll fall short of 32 years. But I thought about, how can we honor somebody that has worked so hard? Another thing I want to tell you, Sam, and these people up here know it, if you think being a councilperson is just coming in here for a couple hours twice a month, that's not what it's about. It's hard work, and Mabel's done that hard work. She works at her job 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. While sometimes I don't necessarily agree the work that she's doing is worth, well, it's her work, and she's doing it. So for that reason, I'm going to introduce a motion tonight, that we have a Gateway Park, a new park that we bought, which will eventually be in the Third Ward when we get through the annexation, to the, to the, name it the Mabel Mumford Putts?
Pounds.
I never get that last name right.
Close enough, that's fine.
Gateway Park. And I, I'm hoping the council will pass this motion. I'm sure it'll morph itself into the Mabel's Park in a few years, that's what it'll be referred to. But nothing, nothing could make me happier than to see the council approve that and see a nice, big, shiny sign up there.
Thank you very much.
For your time. And I think we all need to stand and give her a round of applause.
Is there a second on this? All in favor, aye.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
I'm introducing the motion, are we going to?
We already did. We already passed it.
Oh, you did? Oh, okay.
Are you surprised?
Say yes, even if you're not.
I'm more surprised, I'm actually stunned at some of the things he said, but maybe it's all right, Marty, we've had a good time together.
Well, Mabel and I have had a relationship that goes on for a long time, and it has been extraordinary watching you, about the depth of care you've had for your ward.
Thank you.
That has been unequal. As someone who truly, deeply wants the best, not only for Chester Town, but for your ward that has been the one that has had more problems in crime, and you're right on it. So I think this is wonderful.
Thank you.
Read that.
Yes. I'll get my glasses on.
Good.
The town of Chester Town proclamation, proclaiming Monday, December 16, 2013, as Mabel Mumford Day in Chester Town. Whereas 32 years ago, Mabel Mumford was elected as the councilwoman for the Third Ward of Chester Town, beginning her long and stellar period of holding office, the longest in the history of Chester Town. And whereas during her decades of public service, Mabel was a councilperson of the people, relentlessly representing her ward and working toward making it and the town a better place to live and work. And whereas Mabel Mumford is a longtime citizen of the area and community, who raised her family in Chester Town, was well-known for her career with Coach Athie in the Washington College Athletics Department, and for involvement in many activities benefiting families and individuals with needs in her town. And be it therefore resolved, in recognition of Mabel's efforts and talents, developed over years in public service with the Washington College Athletic Department, for her dedication to the quality of life of her neighborhood, the Mayor and Council of Chester Town, in this proclamation, do hereby name the proposed new park on High Street and Flatland Road, the Mabel Mumford Gateway Park.
Thank you.
And be it therefore resolved by the Mayor and Council of Chester Town, that Monday, December 16, 2013, be proclaimed as Mabel Mumford Day in Chester Town, honoring Mabel for her 32 years of wonderful service to our town, our community, our citizens, thanking her for the 11,680 days that she will have served, and awarding her the key to the city.
Oh, my goodness.
You want to come around front here?
Can I have my sons?
Of course, come on.
I didn't know they were coming, but.
Looks like they showed up. Come on, goodbye, guys. Come on, don't.
Come on, guys.
I didn't bring you up to be thankful. Oh, we have to do that before. Tricky violence, none. Come on, guys, come on, get next to your mom.
Hurry up.
A little closer.
Oh, closer.
Ooh, a little better. Oh, come on.
I'm winding it up.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, we will have more later. Okay, Bill?
Yeah, I'm like Chief, man, I don't know how you can follow up that stuff. Chief's still here, we want to have an executive session following this meeting about a new police hire.
10-508.
And an employment contract.
All right. Under 10-508 of the Anushev Code of the State of Maryland, I requested an executive session following this meeting.
Is there a second on that?
A second.
Whoa, excuse my voice. Who did the second?
Linda.
Linda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next.
Yeah.
All right, the DBED grant application, I was hoping to have more for that. I submitted a rough to DBED last week to the party that Mr. Moog had been talking with, and to this day, I haven't heard, so I guess I'll have to hold this over till the next meeting. The whole, the whole thing about the contract with Air Saint Rose hinges on the DBED grant application. So I thought they would have comments, most of those applications are for businesses. So gave, wrote down everything that I had been told, and we leave it at that.
Okay.
Bill, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, you know which section DBED went to?
I get, Pat Bednar. Pat Bednar is the.
Okay. The reason, the only reason I'm asking is, depending which section, it depends on the strings that'll come with it. So to the next council, I just make sure that they look at those strings. so really haven't heard and like I said, there were a lot of square pegs and round holes there. Did Mark leave? Mark Mumford leave? Everyone thinks we're, this item on the agenda was swearing in the new mayor. What, what this is, is generally a new mayor is sworn in as early in, in January as possible by Mark Mumford, the clerk of the circuit court. And that's just so in case there's business that has to be conducted between the first and, I think our first meeting is the sixth, that that can be done. It certainly doesn't matter to me unless there's business in between that period of time. I think everybody, I think it had been written publicly that would be January 6th, but it will probably be, I was going to suggest that the swearing in of the new mayor happened at noon on January 2nd, and I was hoping that Mark would have been here, but
I did, excuse me, but I did run that through a little bit with him and he thought according to the charter, it's before the
The charter
The night before the regular meeting begins and
It doesn't say. I mean, we've, we've looked it up.
You reviewed it, well, anyway, I know he's not in town on the 1st because they're marching, marching in Philadelphia with a mummer parade.
Oh, you mean, you mean on that date, not, so, no, I, I think Chris isn't here on the 1st either, because it's New Year's Day or whatever. So anyway, any, any problem with us telling you what, what day that was in the press, whether it's noon or what, or at the, at the, at the worst, it would be the beginning of the meeting on January 6th, okay? I don't expect any big business to happen in that time period. Gibson Anthony kept his promise and brought three bluebird boxes in.
Yes, that's great.
Bernie, I think, is going to give us an indication of where they should go in that park. And also, while I was talking with Gibson, and since he was hot on the trail, we'll say, the rail trail, there's a stretch between the railroad station and Lynchburg Street that would be perfect for about three bluebird boxes. As you look up from the bend coming around by the railroad tracks, you look straight up, it's the kind of habitat that they would like to the south of the trail.
Excellent.
So we're working on that, too.
This, this is in addition to the ones that are going in, in Bailey Park?
Yes.
Yeah, a different side of town, you know, the one blue on either end.
He wanted them in Bailey because he lives in Heron Point.
Right, he can check on them, yes.
Can't have too many bluebirds.
Can we, yeah, was there anything decided at your meeting?
The meeting got canceled because of the weather.
Of the weather, okay, yes, right.
It's not a problem, I thought you guys, unofficial approval of
Beautiful.
The only problem with the idea of putting them along rail trails is somebody's got to monitor.
Right.
Somebody has to keep them clean, they have to make sure that nothing, and they've got to make sure that they're done right.
Okay.
Gibson knows how they should be done, but somebody has to do
Oh, I just, I just saw from his previous, you know, head of the rail trail committee, and he, he responded, he thought it was a great idea.
Somebody has to monitor regularly.
Well, I didn't, I didn't know if we were getting a, a flock of people to help us with birds or anything, so maybe it's just Bernie, you know, but if not, that's another good place to put them, nice stretch of, of land. Some of you might have noticed today that the walk-in fallout was removed. And it's hard to keep a secret in town, so I, I just want to explain why the, both the engineer and Case had gone through it and it was really unsound and beyond repair.
For those of you who do not know, on the Mabel Mumford Gateway Park, there was a building there, it was called the Walk-In Fallout Bar. And it was just, you know, what a grand name. But unfortunately, the building was not able to be saved.
And it, it had been moved. I wondered why it was so small. It was a portion of the walk-in fallout and it was on cinder blocks and we started noticing that they had no framing underneath and kind of wrecked. So it turned out to be a lot less expensive to remove it than, than to restore it.
I, I went to look at it today, that site looks so much better without it, believe me.
I knew some people would say that.
It's a great improvement to get it out there.
Well, do you have any idea when it was walk-in fallout? Because I'd be darned if I ever remember.
Uh-oh.
It was when I was in high school.
There, see, I got a witness. Can I get a witness?
When you were in high school?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I remember passing it on the way out of town.
If we ever put another building up there, it's got to be called the Walk-In Fallout.
But it was, it was sideways to the, to the road and not perpendicular like it was.
That might not have been its official name, though, because sometimes
No, it was the casual name of it, just
Pardon?
It's, it was the nickname of it.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, what a great name.
Like the Burn or whatever.
It is a great name.
So we also, we didn't get funded, as everyone knows, we didn't get funded by the granting agency anyway for the restoration of that. I think that's all I have.
Okay, I have just a few things. I have some reappointments and a nomination. The reappointment is for Lucian Maddox to the Historic District Commission. Is there a motion to approve?
I still move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A reappointment of Alex Dick to the, as an alternate to the zoning board of appeals.
Who?
Tomo.
Alex Dick.
Oh.
All in favor? And I want to nominate, and it'll be approved next time, Ted Maris Wolf to the Historic District Commission. You all have the resume and it will be passed on to the incoming mayor and council.
Were there any other applications?
Not for Historic District.
Not for Historic District. That's a very specific, you know.
He's only been here since September.
That's all right. He has the background and the knowledge and the skill and that's all he needs.
Well, can we
We'll let the next, we'll let, let you all make the decision in January. When you're in the Historic District, you're with the commission, you have to be able to demonstrate that you have the skills and the knowledge to make decisions.
Well, I question this because of the Board of Education building, the waterfront and the armory, which he would have to recuse himself.
Then, he would have to, you have to, but let them make this, this termination in the next meeting, they won't have all the information about Mr. Wolf.
Yeah, just hand them out there. We received one more resume today from Deborah Lane, literally right before the meeting, so.
I got another one and I didn't make copies for it just yet. It's in the file. Okay, well, that'll be for the next time anyway.
Okay.
That was for Historic District?
For Planning Commission.
No, for Planning Commission. And that's the fifth one so far.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Bill, you want to take this next one?
Yeah. John Hanley. I just, they, just without, I think the Shared Opportunity Services is having financial difficulties and they sent a letter to the county commissioners to, to William Pickram. And they sent a copy to me and I, and I appreciate that they did that because the town used to pass through CDB, Community Development Block Grant Project to, literally to help build the building. It's located at the, on the 600 block of High Street. They've been wonderful, working in the community with families. They were formerly called the Family Support Center and I think right now they're struggling. And I, I talked to John a couple of times, I sent the council an email because the first email that I got with the letter going to the county commissioners was confidential. And I, I don't know if John wants to make any comments, he's here in case the council would want to talk to him in executive session about the property itself. John, does anyone not know John Hanley?
I know all you guys, my name is John Hanley and I'm the president of the board at Shared Opportunity Services. It was actually formerly called the Kent Family Center, where there was a grocery store that used to be there.
Parkers.
Yes, Parkers. And we built a new facility with, with grant money from county, township, et cetera. And we provided training, program and services for fragile families here in Kent County. And, you know, we're talking single moms and dads, try to help them get back on their feet. We, we give them food, we give them training and programs. And part of all that, those services we provided was when they came to the facility for us to help them, we, we had a daycare center there. So they, they could bring their children and put them in a licensed daycare center and we could train them and help them get back on their feet. Well, we lost our major grant program, which was from the Maryland Family Network, which is on the western shore. And I won't go into the western shore versus eastern shore funding issues, but they're there. And we lost $250,000 grant. So we've been struggling over the past eight months, finding smaller grants, doing fundraisers, just going everywhere we can, every door we can knock on to find money. It's to the point now, all our programs are shut down except the daycare center. So we're at the end of our role. We run out of money, we run out of cash on December 31st of this year. So we will be closing the facility, I shouldn't say closing, we will be suspending operations of the facility there on December 31st. And the really, the thing that breaks my heart is that we're, we're having to put 20 babies and toddlers from our daycare center out there to, to find somewhere to go. And there's a number of daycare facilities here in the area, but very few have room for, for babies, as I call them. So those folks are struggling. We will be laying off nine of our town employees and we're keeping one employee on part-time to manage the building because we have three folks that rent there. The state DLLR program has offices there. Chesapeake College has offices there that provide GED training and we have one other private renter. So we're scraping together to at least maintain the building for those three programs because they're so important for folks that are out of work, that order the DLLR office, folks that want to get their GED there, that's where they come. Unfortunately, we cannot afford to keep the daycare center open. So it's, quite frankly, it's a matter of time. I mean, we'll be open, we're, we're suspending operations on December 31st. We'll try and stay open to provide those last three programs through, for the next six months. So I know there's not a lot of money around for people to find grant money and the time is short. So that's why we have to suspend operations December 31st while we try and reorganize. And we're reaching out to a bunch of folks, United, I met with United Way today, I met with the folks from SCOR today. So I'm trying everything I can to rebuild after December 31st so that, so that we can come back and stay a viable operation and, you know, continue in the community. So I, I know you guys can't vote on anything tonight, but, you know, just know that that is a great location, it's a great facility, and I, I really feel bad that we're going to have to suspend operations. And I mean, the stuff that goes on there, people don't know, like every Monday, we, we support and run the food lane program and we hand out 500 pounds of food and we go pick up at Actley that is donated and 20 families come in there every Monday and they give free food. And they'll, they can go to the food bank on Monday, but the food bank can't go pick up 500 pounds of food to give to these people. So it's all the stuff we do in our spare time over there that's going to go away. So if you can consider any help with us whatsoever, either, you know, state or county or town, it would be appreciated. So I hate to bring the bad news, but I just want to deliver personally because it really breaks my heart.
Did they give you a reason why they took your grant away?
It was, my opinion is two things. Number one is western shore versus eastern shore. And number two, it was a very large grant that had a very complicated protocol for continuing and sustaining the, the grant stipulations. It was extremely complicated. And we, as a non-for-profit, we did not have a full-time grant writer or somebody to support that. So, you know, maybe we didn't dot all the i's and cross all the t's and shame on us, but that's, that's my spin on what happened.
I would like to ask someone to make a motion for an executive session on a real estate matter, please.
Okay.
Annotated code, second
You have to say the whole thing. Under 10-508 of the annotated code of the state of Maryland, I request an executive session following this meeting regarding real estate.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
I have to recuse myself.
Okay, I want to recuse, you got it? You can have it. Okay, all in favor, aye. Okay, John, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, as we move along, we have honored Mabel. And it's now is time for Mr. Gatto. Jim, give us a small token.
Thank you.
A small thank you for your hard work and your diligence for not only the years on council, but the years on the planning commission.
I appreciate that.
So we thank you.
More photographs.
No, not just enough.
I keep losing that card, so.
Thank you.
It has fallen on the floor so many times, but thank you. It's been a, it has been a talented group. And it's going to be interesting seeing the years start off. We have pictures to fill, that I'm sure they'll do well.
Maybe we have something to say.
Now it's my turn. This is a proclamation regarding Tuesday, December 31st, as Margot G. Bailey Day in Chestertown. Whereas Margot Bailey, I guess we should come out here.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Just one thing right after the other. That's all right. Okay, from the Town of Chestertown, a proclamation for Margot G. Bailey Day in Chestertown, which will be Tuesday, December 31st, 2013. Whereas Margot Bailey began her political career 22 years ago as a councilwoman of the second ward and two years later won election as the first female mayor of Chestertown. And whereas during her tenure as mayor, Margot became known as the champion of the American small town where she fought to keep the special nature of Chestertown in place while allowing for changes that would amount to enhancements rather than subtractions for the scale of average social structure and the environment of the community. And whereas Margot G. Bailey as mayor was the pioneer of the town greening efforts here and around the country, a patron of the arts and history, a friend of our sister institutions and a leader of subjects to the needs of the less fortunate who made the difficult decisions for the right reasons. And whereas Margot's friends, colleagues, citizens and employees will all miss her leadership and her unique spirit, they will still be able to seek her out luckily to enjoy her personality, her smile, her wit and to borrow her knowledge and skill. And whereas in recognition of Margot's efforts over the years, the town council has aptly named the Rolling Road Park as a Margot G. Bailey Community Park. And be it resolved that the mayor and council of Chestertown further honor Margot by proclaiming Tuesday, December 31st, 2013, as Margot G. Bailey Day in Chestertown, awarding Margot the key to the city and thanking Margot on the last day of her 20th year as mayor for her service to our community and our citizens by order of Chris Sorino, Mayor-elect.
My daughter-in-law. Sorry. My, these are two people who have always been, I took him campaigning the year I'd lost, I lost by one vote before I was elected, and he was in a stroke. So he's been everywhere around town with me. And my sweet, wonderful daughter-in-law, Nana, has just been so supportive. So I thank them, I thank you all, I thank you all, thank you. And Mayor, here's your key to the city. Thank you, Mabel.
Owen, you can go back to calling her mother now instead of Madam Mayor when she made you do that.
Wow, what a night.
What a night. What a night. Okay, board reports.
Okay, start off with mine?
Sure.
Closing off business, I went through a series of, of notes that I had. The first I want to start off is, is we all heard that Fresh and Greens is closing and I want to know if we contacted both Fresh and Greens and the owner of the shopping center to see how we can begin responding to getting a replacement? you do that.
Wow. What a night.
What a night. What a night. Okay. Board reports.
Okay. Start off with mine?
Sure.
Closing off business, I went through a series of, of notes that I had. The first I want to start off is, is we all heard that Fresh and Greens is closing, and I want to know if we contacted both Fresh and Greens and the owner of the shopping center to see how we can begin responding to getting a replacement?
But you know what? I'm glad you brought it up. This, this really obsesses me. When Super Fresh closed, remember all the gnashing of teeth? Oh, my God, we need another grocery store. So, we get a grocery store. And we got a great grocery store. And people didn't go to it. You don't use it, you will lose it. And you know, part of that is us. I would go into Fresh and Green, this is where I shop, it was empty. It was empty. The store was clean, it was stocked during the night, not during the daytime. Interesting foods, good produce, I mean, good, and, and good meats. But no one was there. Now, I know Bill has called this.
Yes, immediately upon, you sent us the article back, you read it in your son. I called Dennis Silicata, and guess what? He had not been told. This was done across the state by these owners, they're not really food store owners. He has, he's been working with three competitors, two of which are well-known, Redners is one and the other one's Food Lion. The other one's more or less local. And I, I think, I surprised them with the phone call, but he said he had been reserving the Rite Aid, which is gone, for a larger store, food store, and, and there was interest. So, hopefully, we'll, there'll be more soon about that.
The, you know, we all, we wrote Redners about three years ago, two years ago. Because Chestertown showed up on their website as a future site for their location. They were looking at Queen Anne's County, which was not exactly our Baileywick. But this could be a nice fit for them. It also could, you know, with CDBG money and, and DBED money, we, we might be able to entice some, with grant money, some user with grant money in some way, shape, or form. I know when the people occupied the old Campbell Soup Plant, the county used CDBG money to buy the refrigeration equipment and lease it to the company for, for 20 years. It worked out well. It created a lot of jobs for a lot of years. I, I think we should be actively pursuing that as a method, because it's gonna be tough. There's a lot of competition out there, and once you've got a failure like this hitting you in the face, the other stores are gonna look long and hard, is it a viable location? So, we've gotta make sure that we win a new store here. The other things, one I'd like to take the opportunity to, to thank a variety of people for working with me this, this year in the problem of leaving off names. I'll try not to, I'm just gonna mention a few. The one, the two clubs, the Garden Club and the Curb Appeal People have done immense amount of work in this, this community, and they've gotta be recognized. Nancy McGuire, Bob Sykes, Jen, as a few, are, come to mind as people who have worked with me and stayed with me. Gibson Anthony and Linda Kiper, political opposites, if there ever was one, have both been.
Up two.
Up two. Have both been extremely supportive. We've done a lot of work together, have bounced ideas back and forth. We don't often agree, or, and we may disagree more often, but it's been, it's been a pleasure working with, with them. What I'd like to do now is, a couple of projects, is the extension of the Gilchrist Community Trails into Coventry area. I don't know if anybody from Coventry is here, except, you know, Councilman, you Councilman. They thought they might show up. I've talked with the HOA up there, and they were supportive of a study. And I think what I'd like to do is use some of our Armory funds to fund a small study, feasibility study, to extend into the, the Rails to Trails across Route 20 up to Coventry, Washington Park and Coventry area. When Coventry was approved as a subdivision, the Planning Commission reserved right-of-way paths through the subdivision to connect to a future Rails to Trails. And I'd like that to continue, and the council, I'd like to make a motion today that the council seek consultants slash survey to see the feasibility of extending the Rails to Trails up there, and expend up to $15,000 from the, from the Armory Fund to do this.
I would really like the new group to make those decisions, Jim. I'm not saying it's not a great idea.
I just want to put it on, I want to put it on the table. Fountain Park was the next item on my list here. And the, they came to us this last year with a, a plan for development. I think they should be invited back to the new council because there's brand-new people. But there are things that I think that are important, are up here tonight. The trees in the park need to be assessed and actions taken to address their, their issues, the root damage and the feeding. And I, I think we should issue a contract for that, so that that's taking place, because those trees are too good, too big to lose, too valuable. The second is, goes back to Marty's been yelling about this for at least three, maybe four years, and it's overuse of the, of the one segment of the park by the artisan groups. I think the council should make a recommendation to the next council that they actively pursue this, now that we have the winter hiatus before they start up again, that we move them to the area between Memorial Park and the courthouse, that street there, or some other place. But if we don't, we're gonna waste another three years and do permanent damage to the, to the park. And one of the things that came out of the, the plan, I was just looking at it the other night, that was developed by, by the, by the, yeah, by Garden Club, was around the, the corners of the park, light fixtures and stuff, that we could do some brick paving in there. I think that was a great idea. I, I took a walk through some of the farmers' markets, and those corners could be expanded for pedestrian use. So, it's something I think the next council should take a good, hard look at. Moving on, the NEA grant, this current status of it?
Casey's working on it.
Okay. Have we received it, no? Have there been yes, no?
Yeah, it's been awarded. Yeah, it's been awarded. So, Casey will be working with various groups on developing the idea for the playscape and the whole thing. So, it's, it's in the process.
Okay. There's been, I just want to reemphasize that I read in the paper someplace, one comment from you, Madam Mayor, about the use of the college funds for a match, to $7,000 match, or, I mean, I thought the council made it perfectly clear one time to keep these funds for the Rails to Trails project. Even you mentioned that.
Well, the Rails to Trails project, you know, interestingly enough, has been funded by another sources. Do you want to bring that up? You know, to me, it was $8,000 match. The council, I mean, the college was able to work with DBED to secure half, $16,000 needed for getting this project moving along in an intelligent, careful way. And it can come from just like general funds or surplus, however you want to name it, it's fine with me.
He said NEA grant. He didn't, he didn't say that.
Well, the NEA, well, the NEA grant was coming up.
Yeah, it was two items.
What was your question?
What was your question then?
Two questions. One, the $7,000.
It's $8,000.
$8,000. Okay. As a match, okay. Surplus, okay. The second was the NEA grant.
I don't remember.
The first, well, I dug up, I dug up this minute, so I had this question three times between the last meeting and now. And in, in our budget workshops, we used the match as the college, as the college funds, and it came out in our budget ordinance. And I'll read you a quote that you made if you want.
Yes.
Okay, this is from the second meeting, because, so apparently, everybody forgot. You know, I, I want to preface my remarks by saying it doesn't matter. If it come out of your unappropriated surplus, I think you just dedicated some to Coventry.
Yeah, you just took some to Coventry.
I don't understand exactly, you have an unappropriated surplus, you could say, we are gonna leave that $200,000 there forever, we're gonna hug it and love it and never spend it. Or you can say, we're dedicating it to this or that. It's completely, and you can vote every meeting if you want to change it or alter the, the budget slightly, but it doesn't really make any difference, it comes from the same area. Not a dime has been received on NEA or spent out of the $200,000. So, those are two different things.
I don't know why you're bringing this up now, Jim. I really don't. I don't understand this.
Okay. Let's finish, let me finish this. There was, Dan Manip, he thought that maybe you didn't, that this was, was hidden during the budget process. And here's what you said on May 17th. Okay, make it known right now that the first priority here is the Rails to Trails, the $200,000. Anything left over, it would go for the NEA project or budget it separately, because the Rails to Trails is a key item, so we can get it all the way to your basketball court, meaning the Gateway Basketball Court, you're talking to me. That is essential. So, you knew about it, we passed the budget, we all signed it.
The first precedent, okay, the first precedent of that was that we would use the funds totally first for the Rails.
We haven't, we haven't spent any funds.
We got extra money for the Rail and Trail.
I still think the match to the NEA grant should be from general funds or specialized funds.
This has been done.
Okay, that's fine. And you can, you can vote on that tonight, and it won't come out of the basket, out of the college Armory funds, it'll come out of the general funds.
Yeah.
Because if we're quoting funds. But it's silly to have arguments about.
Yeah, I mean, this was done a while back in the budget hearing, and approved.
And if, if it got, okay, I've been opposed to that from day one. If it got past me, I apologize, but I want to correct it now. Even you were quoted here saying, it's, no, it's coming out of the general funds in this meeting.
Excuse me?
Yes. Margot is.
Here's what Margot said on this time last year. Margot said, Mayor Bailey proposed that the grant from the federal would be matched to see, this is for the $25,000. Mayor Bailey stated that the committee would also look at the stories of the Chesapeake Heritage for funding. Mayor Bailey stated she hoped to use some of the donation from Washington College for the Army to help fund the next step in the Playscape project. And so, in January, you said, hey, we've gotta have a motion before we change any of these monies out of the college Armory funds.
I don't understand this, Jim. I'm really gonna call you on this one. This is our last meeting. These things have been done, they were clear, they're open, and why are you doing this at our very last meeting together?
I'm closing up a period of stuff.
It's been closed.
And I, it got reopened.
Let him finish, Mayor.
It got reopened because it was closed, it's been stated monthly, every month, $200,000 is available.
Still there?
Still there.
Okay, when you write a check, do you wait till it's cash before you delete it from your, from your, your checking?
I don't write checks.
Okay, the two, the $200,000, if we committed $55,000 or $25,000 from it, it should have been reduced to 175.
And it was, in the budget.
Not in our, right to here, $200,000.
Restricted $200,000.
This is actual funds on hands and in the bank.
Washington College donation, restricted use, $200,000.
Okay. I can terminate, I can, I can end this conversation real quick.
You can keep going if you want.
I have quotes on that, too.
I make a motion.
Why aren't there expenditures from it?
Because there hadn't been any expenditures from it.
There hasn't been any. There's been any money.
There, there hadn't been any expenditures in that area.
This is the same discussion we've had the last four years.
This is just chasing your tail.
Yeah. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion. It can terminate this conversation completely. I make a motion that we amend the budget, put the $200,000, put the $25,000 that was drawn against the trails, or against the college payment for the Armory, back, take it out of that, and take it out of the general fund.
Any idea what you're talking about?
Which? The NEA?
The NEA.
And what about your idea about Coventry, the $15,000 for a study there?
Okay, that is, again, for the extension of.
That failed for lack of motion?
No, we, we decided, the mayor said, and I agreed yes to it. Let the next council do it. I'll, I'll come to the next council meeting, or one thereafter.
So, you just want the, the $25,000 match to come out of the general fund? That's fine.
Okay, yes. And I'd like.
If that clears anything up, that's just fine.
It's fine.
It's fine with me.
You notice I'm staying quiet, because I didn't, I voted against it in the first place. Coming out of anybody's fund. We're, we're planning that, we're, we're paying a $25,000 match to plan the same thing that, that we just wanted $8,000. We spent a lot of time planning things and not doing anything.
It's all gonna happen.
It's all gonna happen.
I have a motion on the table.
It's all gonna be planned to death.
I'll second it.
You've got a second? All those in favor?
No. Just to be busy.
Okay. Margot, let me say this. You know, we, we have disagreements, and the one thing that, 30 years of knowing you, we can always walk out the door, because I've, I've got a couple of more things that are, that are gonna.
Gonna rile you up.
Yes. And, and one is, is Gateway Park, okay? I've got notes here. We put an RFP out, okay? And the RFP, as far as I know, okay, it said that the consultant would have three public meetings.
Yeah, and they're going to.
Well, they've already got a draft. The first one was designed to solicit ideas, and they, and we now have a draft of this, of the park.
You gotta start somewhere. You can't just start saying, hey, you know.
Well, that's, that was the idea, that the public would have complete.
Well, that's, we gotta start.
I know. This is where tail taste, tail chasing, because we, we sent off a grant application with certain activities in it.
Okay. I think the contract.
Sent to the Planning Commission, et cetera.
I think, I think the people should take a look at it. There's been significant changes in the plan.
Kevin, tell me thing again.
We'll look at it at the next meeting, Jim.
Okay.
This is sad.
It's not sad, Bill.
It is. Even against this Gateway Park, since it's a meeting.
Okay. The proposal eliminates the pedestrian bridge, okay? I didn't want to bring this up, but it eliminates pedestrian bridge, because it's $150,000. It was supposed to be $15,000. I told this council that this park was gonna cost us more because we were moving on it too fast, and we didn't. The estimated cost of sidewalks from the state highways, a million dollars. And they're not, and one of the.
Okay, this sounds eerily like something else. Sidewalks to where?
Sidewalks, where are we gonna run these?
To Coventry? No, no.
I don't know where that estimate comes from.
One of the things we did, wait, one of the things we did was ask state highways to do a sidewalk study to go from, to address the park, access to, wait a minute. And one of the responses, when they said, their team said, there isn't enough foot traffic there, was a response by us that said Gateway Park is being developed. And that's the reason we're asking for sidewalks along Flatland Road down to Route 20. It's, it's in a response.
It has nothing to do with it. No. It is not. But when Christine Bentley came here at the time, the idea was finding a safe way for people from Coventry and that whole area to walk down Flatland Road.
But we still need to get.
It was a different thing. Responsive State Highway was on that issue of lighting sidewalks, and of course, a million dollars for sidewalks on Flatland Road is nuts. But that can be dealt with next council.
Really, $3 million.
$3 million.
It's really $3 million.
But it has nothing to do with, with Gateway Park.
It's access to Gateway Park. We don't have, right now, Gateway Park has a four-foot sidewalk leading to it across the bridge, and it stops, okay? It has no access from the Rails to Trails, which was a big selling point. My point is, it has to be looked at, and looked at again, and the cost factor to address the safety factor has to be addressed. We have, the plans, a current draft has no, showing no pedestrian crossing, suggested sketches, sketches only was requested for pedestrian crossing of Route 20.
Okay, anything else?
I, I think.
I'm not, we're not beating this dead horse anymore. I mean, unless you want to keep that one.
You have other things out, don't you?
You have another list?
All right. That's the key, I have long lists of stuff. Most of the time, I just simply come to Bill and we talk it over. But these are things that I think the public has to know about.
I think the public ought to be given a chance to see the earliest.
Say, you need to tell me thing again.
The earliest conceptual plans. They're going to the county, because it's in the county, at their January Planning Commission meeting. And it'll be, it'll come back to the town, back to the Planning Commission after that.
Well, it's time for everybody to look at it and have meetings on it.
And, two other things. The council voted to annex the park, and I realize the surveying is.
Did we vote to annex it?
Yes.
I don't recall we voted to annex it.
You said that Bill would take care of it. He's done plenty of annexations.
I'd be glad to, but I thought I told you all that the title was fairly unclear on that property. Would not make the best...
Yeah.
Where's the letter that you sent to the county?
Yeah. Oh, the one we just sent, but approving it.
Yeah, what did I do with that?
About what?
You sent a letter to the county.
That's because to waive, their site plan to waive fees.
Waive fees for site plan approval.
Their planning commission makes you ask the county commissioners to waive the administrative fee.
We had voted on it two minutes back.
I don't recall voting.
I thought I remembered it being, you said it was going to be annexed into the town.
Give me clear, Jim. Are you against us annexing it?
No, I'm for annexing. Okay, because I think we could...
Well, Bill has a good issue about annexing when it's, it doesn't hurt to leave it where it is. It doesn't do any harm to the project.
It's going to cost a lot to clear up the title.
It's going to cost a lot of money to clear up the title.
No, no, I mean title. I mean the description.
The description.
It's definitely closed.
We can move ahead with the mail, Mufford Gateway Park as is and it will be legal. It'll be good. It'll be done. Or we can sit and wait and try and spend a lot of money to clear up these murky meats and bounds. Your choice or the next group's choice.
Two, two more questions on that. When we purchased the property, okay, was there an environmental assessment done on it?
Why did we purchase the property? Were you here?
No, I wasn't here. It was before my time.
Do you know why?
It was available. Then we wanted to have a Gateway Park.
There was, there was an environmental done.
There was some questions about another 7-11 before the, before the town purchased it.
You know, it's a great spot for a park.
This sounds like a red...
Why are we doing this again?
No, okay.
We've done the Gateway Park.
Wait a minute. Here's why I'm saying it, okay? We bought a $350,000 piece of property, but probably...
Yeah.
Okay. It wasn't apparently, it wasn't surveyed, okay? Because this survey now is not sufficient enough for annexation.
You know, not to be the description of your, your town boundary. If you want to spend $10,000, we can make it so, okay? But to me, it looked like a hurdle to develop in this park. Simply, the county is waiting for us to get there, they're waive the fee unless somebody manipulates it so they won't. Otherwise, the fee's $200. That's the beginning of the public process. Would you let us do that?
The public process, to me, okay, when the RFP went out, was initially, what do you want to see in the park? And I want to be kept up to date on this stuff. If, if we didn't do a survey, then I had question, did we get an environmental assessment done? And was the assessment done for human contact and not for an industrial site or business site?
Oh, no, that wasn't in the engineering for the site plan.
I hope you did something enough to see this.
No, that wasn't in the engineering for the site plan. A question was...
I will see if there was an environmental review done of it and, or assessment one and two and get back to the council.
I did want to mention, since it's been named after me, I only have 20 years left. God's been talking to me. So let's not block it.
No, I'm just raising questions about it.
I've already told Mr. Ingersoll I want nothing named after me after I'm gone, okay?
Don't die real quick now.
Well, that ship sailed.
Well, I said 20 years. I got 20 years. So let's, let's preserve it. Is it my turn or are you finished?
For now, I'll acquiesce.
Oh, okay. It's Linda's turn. Okay. After that, let's see. I've had a request to repaint the goose.
The what?
Repaint the goose down, several requests and I had forgotten about it.
To repaint the goose.
It's bronze.
It's never painted.
It's bronze.
It's bronze!
Have you looked at it?
I will. Does it have bird stuff on it?
Now, the one over by the fish whistle on the post.
Yeah, yeah, bronze.
It's patina on it.
Well, if you say we'll repaint it again.
I don't want to paint it.
All right. All right, forget it. Okay, now...
It may look off, we'll look at it and see.
Whoever, whoever looks at it.
Maybe we'll make one of the employees who's been the worst, naughtiest.
Try to get one that knows how to swim.
Just responded to one of my...
Who's going to polish the swan? That's what I want.
All right. The farmer's market.
I'm not going to polish it.
I've had a request from the farmer's market to, can they have a sandwich sign or something on Washington Avenue through the winter months to say that the market is still open?
Where they put, where the state highway says, "Okay."
I mean, can you, something you can put up and take down on Saturday? Is there anything?
I don't know. It could be State Highwayland. Check with them.
I'm sure they're not called.
All right. All right.
Okay. The farmer's market will...
Put out on those five signs that we have out there. Still open.
Four, there's only four. The farmer's market will be open through the winter and it'll be open this Saturday and it'll also be open Christmas Eve from 8:00 to noon. So if anyone, anybody wants to order pies, rolls, cakes or anything, see your vendor this Saturday. And like I said, they'll be open Christmas Eve from 8:00 to noon. Now, the next thing is first Fridays. We need to direct people to our businesses on Cannon Street and Park Row. We just need to, I don't know whether we can advertise...
Advertising doesn't do any good. What you need is directional.
I mean, you put in, put in the, you know, the minutes from the meeting or just to remind...
How about a bellwether?
I'm, not the minutes, but I mean the, write up, you know, you write up for the, for the... From the spy in the Kent News.
Constant content.
No, no, no. People don't read that. What we have tried and trying to get.
You're telling people they don't read the Kers.
No, they don't look, they're not looking for directions.
They don't read the spy.
You need to have good directional signage that can go out directing, and something that's eye-catching, not a whiteboard, black letters on it.
Nancy.
At the end of Cannon, of High and Cross Street, directing people to those areas and directing them straight ahead to Gabriel's, Bob Ortiz's and those areas. And also the same thing would be done for...
Park Row.
The Park Row shops. That sign could be made to go up on that corner. So it's going to be directional and it has to be something that's going to be eye-catching. People are going to look at it and say, "We need to walk down there." They're not going to read the print and say, "Oh my God, I read that." It needs to be there when they are there. So Nancy, maybe say something.
Margot, I was actually talking to Bill this week about a concept that I have about almost creating neighborhoods within neighborhoods and being able to emphasize those neighborhoods, such as Cannon Street Row and then all the people in that area.
Yes.
But also in the parking, there's another thing that I have a sort of a temporary solution to, that the signage will actually bring attention to the area and also maybe satisfy the parking.
I think it's a great idea.
So we'll bring it, bring it to you. We have to write it down, get it ahead, probably in January, probably.
Now, the last thing that I would like to request before the new people come in, I would like separate budgets for Gateway Park, Bailey Park and Remembrance Park. I look at the Marina budget every month and I see the huge deficit that the Marina has and I think that each ward should have a separate budget for their major project.
I think you should present that to the new board. This board, this group cannot act on that.
Well, I will.
Are you just disfounding because you think you have to do it? No, that's silly.
I will bring it up at the next meeting.
Well, that's when you should bring it up.
But I'm just telling you, there are major projects in each ward and I don't see any of them in the black. I see all of them in the red and I think that each council member should be aware of the major projects in their ward and be aware of how much taxpayer dollars...
That's a fine idea for you to bring up at our budget workshops.
How much taxpayer dollars are being spent.
Well, I think Pat will be happy to do that.
How much is coming out of the general fund to subsidize these projects.
Okay. Pat, really, Pat will deal with it.
I don't know where you get money for a park if you don't get to have a general fund. Parks aren't moneymakers.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point about parks.
Is your LLC an auxiliary or is it part of...
No, it's, we do raise funds and we give it back to the town. That's so that I could go out and contact people for donations. I don't think the town needs to, wants to be, people going out looking for donations. You know, you trying to make an issue out of that?
No, I'm not trying to, but I just wondered.
Well, you could start one for your farmer's. What park do you have?
I have the Marina.
Let's not get personal.
You know, this is crazy. I thought this was the last meeting. This was going to be a love fest, for crying out loud.
We have to do a priority hall.
It's anything but a love nest. That's why I asked for the time for you in the beginning because I had this feeling this kind of stuff was going to...
Well, I'm not, I'm not finished.
No, no, no.
I'm finished.
Might as well level it up.
Yeah, she'll start on me, I know. That's okay. All right.
Next.
I've got good news.
Thank you, Marty.
The trees are planted in Bailey Park. And I'm used to going to the dog park and people...
And that was done with grant money, not town money.
Yeah. I'm used to going to the dog park and people coming up and telling me what a wonderful dog. I now go to Bailey Park and they tell me how beautiful the park is. And if you haven't been there...
It's wonderful.
Have you, is anybody here that hasn't seen it since we've planted it? It's been about a week.
Most people.
Oh, and you must have been there.
I grabbed my bike down the way to the park.
Yeah, okay. Well, it is beautiful and people really, really do appreciate that. And I want to thank Case and Bill for getting the grant and it is grant money. I did have one person say, "What are you doing spending all this money on trees?" I said, "When you get a grant for trees, guess what you're going to do? You're going to spend the money for trees." And that's what we did. And they look super, so. And that's, that's my, I am really sorry that this is ending this way.
I'm very upset about this meeting ending this way.
Don't be upset at all.
I'm sorry. It's really sad. Thank you, Marty.
I am glad, I am glad I said the good things about you before with the meeting that you weren't here, so.
Nigel.
All right, first of all, I want to ask, is there anything at all we can do to help the family center, some kind of emergency way?
We don't have any, well, we're going to talk about this executive session.
Yeah, I think there are things we can do. I've spent a lot, is John still here?
No.
Spent a lot of time recommending different foundations that I thought might help him that he hadn't thought of before, but that, that hasn't panned out and we have some other ideas. But they're just ideas because you're the council.
Okay. The other thing, one thing that I don't want forgotten, and it's easily forgotten, is a house that is hiding behind Coventry Farms.
Oh my gosh, that's...
That nobody wants to remember, that's not supposed to be taken down, goes way back in history.
It'll be fallen down.
It is.
Well, that's what some people may be hoping for, but let's...
I don't think you can see it any longer.
Oh, yeah, if you look hard, it's there. You can see it.
Boy, if that is, you're right, that is easy to forget.
Could I, may I have a few minutes to toot my own horn?
Of course you may.
It's not as bad as it looks. First of all, so I don't forget, I want to thank everyone, the staff here, Phil Ingersoll, who never fails us, the town crew. If you go through Chestertown at 7:00 on the evening of the Tea Party event that was trashed with everything around 5:00, you wouldn't find a speck of paper. Everything is spotless. You would never know we had a visitor. And that's, that's our town men. They are terrific. Our utility men are also great. Mr. Sykes and all of them that work. Did I forget anybody? Because we have some great workers.
Police Department.
Police Department. Well, they're out there every, all the time. And they are terrific. I just want to say a few things. As a representative for the third ward of Chestertown, I would like the citizens of the town who I have so proudly represented during this 32 years of completed service, how I have spent my time serving you beyond my local town work. I have, on behalf of you, attended meetings and workshops in Frostburg, Cumberland, Huggers Town, Frederick, Baltimore, Annapolis, all the Eastern Shore towns, including Cambridge, Easton, Salisbury, Ocean City, the Russian Embassy, Rocky Gap State Park, the stadium tour in Baltimore before it ever opened. We were honored to have the opportunity to go through there. We were in Baltimore for a conference, Maryland Municipal League Conference, and we were bused in. We got to see how quickly someone who's injured can be x-rayed. The doctors are all underground there and can take care of whatever happens on the field. I had the honor of touring the White House a couple of years ago with, under the direction of the Maryland Municipal League. Under the former mayor, Almer Horsey, we planned the census parade here in Chestertown. We had at least two State of Maryland crab feasts for the purpose of economic development. The shooting of the movie Space in which many locals participated. I think all of my family was honored to be in that, including myself. Two years ago, I was a grand marshal for the Tea Party, which was something I never expected to do and was terrific. Served Chestertown under the direction of five governors. I traveled to Annapolis and spoke on behalf of saving the Upper Shore Hospital Center. Went directly in front of the governor and told him how important it was and two minutes later it was turned down.
It was the saddest day of my life. And then I say that the proudest moment has been carrying the Chestertown flag, which Mr. Ingersoll has seen me turn that corner, at the opening of the Maryland Municipal League Conference in Ocean City. We all have to line up in the back room, and if anybody doesn't put their flagpole exactly where it should be, all the towns fall, and we have to start all over. This was like at 8:00 in the morning when nobody's awake. It is my understanding that I have been made a life member of the Eastern Shore Association. And along with that, I will try to reestablish the Eastern Shore Scholarship for students studying political science or a service career, such as a police officer. And if that works, if anybody cares to make a donation, they can send checks to me marked Eastern Shore Association of Municipalities, ESAM, on my behalf, and we will start the scholarship fund up again, which I did for many years. That would be the colleges of Warwick Tech, Salisbury University, University of Maryland Eastern Shore, Chesapeake College, and Washington College. And I believe that is a synopsis of a few of the things that I've done since I've been representing this town. Right?
Yes, ma'am.
And the greatest is, there's a photograph somewhere at the Maryland Municipal League of me turning the corner carrying that flag, and it is really something else to be sure that Chestertown is recognized. So, with that in mind, I thank you all. I'm happy that I have been able to represent so many for so long. Is there anyone I didn't thank? That's it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Marty.
Thank you.
One, if I could interject one thing. One, I think the town has to invest in itself. Marty was correct. The one place parks come from is a general fund. I think we have to continue to invest in parks and invest in Chestertown. You've been very aggressive in that, Margot. I don't want to take that away from you. What I was trying to drive at is that we have a list of stuff that somehow, we have a list of stuff to do. That's all I'm going to say, okay? But the town must continue to invest in itself in all aspects, whether it's a park, recreation. We've just started on a very active recreation program that hasn't been around for years. And I think this is, goes back to your leadership, goes back to this council's leadership and Mr. Arrowhead's leadership. But the need to invest in this town is constant and regular. I'll add that.
Okay. Anything from the audience? Yes, Rebecca.
I can forward?
Yes.
Well, I had other remarks, but in light of the conversation this evening, I'll try to escape.
Just escape your name and-
I will. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Rebecca Flora, and I am one of your appointees to the waterfront committee. And so, I'm here, first of all, to commend the mayor and all of you, and thank you for forming the committee and for showing the leadership to actually buy the waterfront property and to really plan for the future in terms of the waterfront. And I wanted to come and, first of all, commend you all still sitting in office for that leadership and for that action. As part of the committee, I think we've still got our hands full. We've got a lot of work to do next year, and I hope that we'll see some of that get done. I, I really want to, I guess, in light of the decision to move forward with some design work, I just really want to assure you all that I, at least, as one of your representatives, will be insisting on a public process and a planning process being mapped out, which really has not been fully mapped out to date. And I think that that's something that really is going to need to be done after the first few years. So, I'm here to thank you and assure you that that will happen, if there's anything I can do about it. And just so you all know, you may not know me, but you need to know something. I moved here two years ago with my husband. The mayor appointed me after a year to be part of this committee, and she did that because she took the time to get to know some of my background. I'm actually a professional planner. I'm a certified economic development professional. I have actually undertaken the development of hundreds of acres of waterfront development property. I am a specialist in sustainable community development, and I have raised millions of dollars for development. I have been involved in and have actually led housing development, business development, Main Street redevelopments. This is my profession. It's what I do. So, I take this committee very seriously. And for that, I really feel the committee needs to be held accountable. And so, while I have been somewhat quiet through the course of this year, and I apologize for not being here previously, my visit, my, my work takes me out of town actually to do consulting of this sort around the country. And so, I'm often not here on Monday evenings. And so, I was here this evening, and I wanted to take a moment to not only thank you, commend you, but also assure you that these areas of what we have in front of us in terms of the redevelopment of this waterfront are critical. And because you did vote to invest in some design work moving forward, we could move from the citizen advisory committee, as it's been referenced, to a committee that needs to have accountability to the public. And just, and I am extremely grateful for all the people that have taken the time to be interviewed by us, but I am also cognizant of the many people that have stopped me repeatedly to ask me what's going on. So, there is a need to report to the youth and to report to the public about this process and where we're headed with it, particularly in light of the fact that we're going to be spending some money at this point and moving from what I consider to be a citizen advisory committee. As a certified planner, I also have to sign a code of conduct every year. It's part of what I have to do as a professional planner. And so, I also take that very seriously. And so, as we move forward next year, if there is a point where I feel like we've crossed the line, I will either be upholding my code of conduct by bringing that forward or resigning because that is what I'm obligated to do as a planning professional. And so, I, I don't, I don't want to put a shadow on what tonight has been a really wonderful evening, but I want to assure, thank you, and once again, assure you that there is nothing probably more important than you've actually been able to pull the fabric of this community together in terms of the buildings and the structure and the main streets. The most important thing we can do for the future of this town would be ensure that a credible planning process is undertaken for the future of our waterfront that takes into account all of the issues that we need to consider in its redevelopment. So, I think we're off to a good start. We need to do better. I won't go into more detail on that, but I will assure you I will make sure that happens next year. Thank you all for your speakers.
Thank you, Rebecca. I knew when I got you in, in with our group on the waterfront that it was a good choice. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mark, you have something you want to say?
I just have one quick question to the town manager. Didn't I, previous meeting, hear that the next leg of the Rails to Trails has been approved and-
It's been funded.
The next to Gateway Park, doesn't it? I just-
It does, it does, it does. Now, the route, the reason, the real reason why the bridge has been abandoned for now is that it has to cross 160 feet of wetland in, in any direction to get to it. So, the idea is to return to the main road and, and connect it that way.
I thought that-
But if we can afford a bridge, we will build a bridge.
And where the $200,000 goes.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
They talked about it when you were out of the room.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else have any comments?
Great job. We'll miss you all.
I have, I have one thing to say. There, we do have a-
Mark, it's not just the Gateway Park, it's the Mabel Mumford Gateway Park.
Yes, sir. I'll get corrected.
Appreciate if you'd use that word.
We do, we do have a proposal from South Fork for Miles Bernard to do the landscaping of the park, to, to the, the grounds and the trees. I had brought it before you. I got it last week. And if you want to enable that, you can. $2,500.
Are you talking about the Gateway Park?
Talking about the fountain park.
Oh, the fountain?
Miles Bernard, Bernard has, has put in a proposal to do the work on the, the grass and, and the trees that you talked about as being so important.
Critical.
So-
Is that the actual work or the-
All the design and monitoring of it being done. To restore the grasses, the, the grounds and the-
Do we all-
Did he give us a price of what it's going to cost us?
No.
Do we all, do we-
You can take it up in the New Year. Looks like that might be the best-
Yeah, I, I like to see numbers.
Wait a minute now.